Wait, the seventy-three oh one, the historic house there?
Yeah.
The guy who wants to build a school in there? I think I saw him there.
Oh.
I'm not, I'm not completely positive, but that, there's a lot of people upstairs in that meeting.
Which way do you want them?
Yeah.
Historic.
Ah.
I'm jealous, let's go there.
Yeah.
There's no light on, I already made my presentation there.
Got left out. What are we, chocolate?
Yeah, well, tell me about it.
So yeah, first thing on the agenda is eating chopped liver.
The other thing on the agenda is because you said the note for timing.
Yes, okay.
It's every single time, I mean, that's important.
Well, Eli's been doing that actually.
Yeah, I missed that one, but yeah, like last, last time.
That was when we started nagging everybody.
It's not been the most consistent on it, but quite a good times now when we started.
Okay. So I think we're ready to start the meeting, we were waiting on Steve, but there is.
There he is.
Can we talk about timing?
Steve, we're starting. As soon as you say, we are starting. It's perfect timing. Okay, so we're starting the meeting at seven thirty-two with public comment. Does anyone have any public comments on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? No one? In that case, we'll go on to, um, the continued public hearing for three thirty-three Winter Street, River School. A special permit for upper removal and limited site line approval for new athletic fields. Who's making the presentation on that? If we could do that, if we could try to limit the presentation to say fifteen minutes, you think that would be possible?
Easily done.
And then comment after that with another fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Where should I?
No, you don't have a tripod?
Sorry, I don't.
Use one of the chairs or see if Jay will let you borrow his.
Jay? Do you have a tripod?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
We only like him because of his tripod.
I think she's got a colleague there. This is the one, I have my own computer there, but, um, my new one is supposed to come to me tomorrow. My old one is there, but I can't.
You have a new one?
Yeah, I can't log onto it right now. It's, it's like stuck in administrator, I think they haven't logged down until.
It's very good.
He's very nice.
I was supposed to give that to you in a minute, but so much I brought it out.
All right, you can start by introducing yourself, that would be great.
So my name is Mark Melvick, I'm the design principal from Activitas. We were in landscape architecture and civil engineering firm retained by the River School to look at the renovation of their existing natural grass athletic fields at the front of their campus. So typically, hearings, what I like to do is just give you a little bit of an indication of the area that we're talking about. This is the hockey rink associated with River School. This is the main entrance coming in off of Winter Street. This is Winter Street, and over here is Hovey Avenue, which is in town name. And the town line actually runs basically right along the back of the residential properties over here. Currently, the athletic fields are natural grass used for a host of sports at the school. There is a wetland area located right over here. We went in front of the conservation commission last week, and that public hearing has been closed. So the proposed project is looking at a conversion of the natural grass fields to synthetic turf. There is currently a buildings instruction project going on in the middle of campus where their existing football field is. So that's facilitating the need to renovate these fields and include the football use on the front portion of the campus. In order to get the required uses on the site, these three homes on Hovey are going to be demolished. They are currently school-owned homes, and then a secondary field joining into the first field will be developed. These fields will be infilled synthetic turf, much like the field that we permitted through you guys over at the high school a couple of years ago. The one primary difference between the two systems, the high school and these proposed fields, is all the fields over at the high school are permanently blind. So all of the colored lines for the field sports are in made. All these fields will be painted on a seasonal basis. You know, this is the, the, the front yard, basically, of Rivers. And in the winter, most, they didn't want to have big low-winged lines that are typical with permanently made lines. To walk you around the site on what's currently being proposed. The main student-athlete entrance will be right here. There'll be an archway signifying the entrance into the property with some masonry stone piers and some small masonry stone walls. Sidewalks taking around the edge of the project to a support building that will be located in this location right here. And David Erhart with Dario Designs will, will speak to the building in a couple of minutes. This black line is the eighty-five short setback from Winter Street, from the center of the road. Around the edges of the field, we are calling for some protective ball netting systems. So ball netting systems will run, basically, starting here, run all the way around the Winter Seas, uh, Winter Street side of the site, and then here, and then this will be a smaller netting. This netting here will be thirty feet in height, and we'll also have thirty-foot-high netting on this end of this, uh, on these ends of the field, kind of, or shooting the ends of the field to collect any kind of lacrosse balls, voiding shots on, on goals. To stop balls from going into the woods or out into the street or into abutted properties.
The existing ball netting's how tall?
Uh, the existing ball netting is roughly twenty feet high. So this is going up by a tenth of a.
I'm sure you have some images of that.
Yes, I do. On the team area sides of the field, all the spectators will be located on this side of the field. We're only including two small semi-portable bleachers. So this really isn't going to be a stadium by any means of the term. It's just two, basically, seventy-four, seventy-three seat, uh, portable spectator seating areas. And on the team area sides, we're proposing to do a shade structure over the team benches. And I have some images of those as well. There'll be a small plaza area in front of the support building. Unit pavers will be installed there, unit pavers will also be installed at the entrance. Two scoreboards are proposed for the sites as well. This kind of finger of land in between the two fields will be burned up, and two scoreboards will be located in this area, shaped like a V. One will be oriented pointing at this field, and the other one will be oriented pointing at this field. I also have some images of that to show you, and also. Are they proposing lighting for the field?
No, for the scoreboards.
The scoreboards will be, just the numbers, like, there will be no other illumination of the board itself. On the far side, over this kind of faint dashed line, that's the town line, we are proposing a landscape burn, about four to five feet in height, that will be completely landscaped to provide some kind of visual buffer for video buffers on Hovey Avenue.
Do you have a section for that?
This one I do not, green one.
I just, I'm just asking.
The field side of the burn will maintain natural grass, so it could be used for informal seating. But that's unlikely that they'll be going over there considering, you know, the amenities are in that portion of the site.
Does this require approval of any kind in Natick?
Yes, so we are, we've gone to one hearing with them, and the second planning board hearing is, is happening right now. So my colleague has been made it with them right now. And really, their, their primary concern is just parking on, on. And that's something that the River School is firmly committed in discouraging any kind of River School event or facility use parking on. Anything, any kind of use on this field, parking will be directed. The commu, the entire Rivers community will be notified that they are in use, Rivers parking, and visiting schools will also be notified to use Rivers parking as well.
So is there any lighting associated with the fields?
No, yeah, um, we started with it, um, and the school decided not to. We will be putting in conduit if they choose in the future to explore adding lighting. At least the infrastructure is there. However, they'll have to come back and permit that through, through the government and town. But at this point, no lighting for the fields.
And what material is the gray sidewalk?
The gray sidewalk is kind of.
And have you gone to the CBA yet to get a variance for the, for the?
We have not, we wanted to get through you and, kind of like what we did for the high school project. We got through planning and, and then we approached CBA. This is a section through Winter Street, the burn with the scoreboards, and also shows a thirty-foot-high ball net. So Winter Street, this is an undisturbed kind of buffer of land that will not be touching this dotted line, it's the approximate limit of work for the site. And then we will be revegetating around the back of the scoreboards, the deciduous trees, and lower understore plantings.
But you're not, are you showing the trees there that are along the hole's length of Winter Street?
Here?
Yes.
No.
So those trees are only at the burn?
Only right in this area, yeah.
Are those existing trees along that field?
These are existing trees.
And so they will stay?
Uh, some of them, some of them will have to come. And I have some images. I think a lot of them would like to go away, if they're, if they're not going to go away on their own. They're, it's, it's a tough area for existing vegetation. There's a lot of bittersweet in there, there's a lot of black cherries that are in decline. So, you know, you can see some of the, the existing trees, they're just in, in tough shape. This shows, you know, the existing netting that is along the edge of the natural grass field currently. But, you know, we, we're limiting the removals of the existing vegetation along Winter Street to the extent we can.
Where's the, where is the right-of-way line relative to where those trees, those trees are along the road? Are they behind the right-of-way?
They are, yes, yeah, so this stone wall here will not be disturbed. And that is outside of the right of way.
Are you trying to replace some of the?
We have not, but we're open to a condition to do some sort of additional landscaping in the area. Again, you know, the, the, um, removals, it's largely removing vegetation that's in decline, and unfortunately, bittersweet, it does provide a bit of a visual barrier, but it's, as you know, it's so invasive, it's basically choked everything out. But we are, we are open to the idea of potentially.
Wouldn't it add value, would you like that appropriate, there may be opposition like this fact?
Uh, for the school?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, no, I, I mean, a few trees, we don't have an issue. Were there any further questions on, on the section?
In the netting drawing, um, how high are the, are the athletes?
How tall are the athletes playing in the field?
For scale.
For scale, about six feet.
Really?
Kids are that big, huh?
Thirty foot, don't matter?
It's thirty foot high.
So we can stack five of those little figures on?
It's more than five of those little figures.
It gets, looks like maybe six or so.
Do you want to talk about this now or do you want to wait for the?
I think the, you know, the, the other thing that we would be willing to discuss if the thirty feet is a big issue for the board, um, we could potentially reduce that to twice.
Well, I mean, right now, you, you have twenty feet, and that's fairly significant when you go up the sidewalk like you did. And now it's going to be going over the entire length of Winter Street. And then there's a burn, which is how high up?
This burn is about five feet.
And how high are the signs, is the signage on top of that?
The scoreboards go up, I believe, eighteen feet.
So you're close to thirty feet again. And I, I guess one of the things is, if it's just a, if it's just a field, hey, it's a field, that's noise. It's the fence that really gives me pause. And I also started wondering about the edges between the, what's becoming a more significant campus and a residential area. I think that's something you might want to just discuss a little bit longer, a little bit more. And, but maybe we go to the architecture?
What's the motivation to raise it from twenty to thirty feet?
It's really ball control.
I mean, if balls been going over the twenty-foot net?
They do it from time to time, yeah. I think it, it's, it's probably not as big of an issue from, let's say, the fifteen-yard line to fifteen-yard line.
It's not like, is it, is the orientation of the field changed or gotten closer to the road, my question?
It's a little bit closer to the road. And lacrosse balls do make their way currently out onto Winter Street. And lacrosse balls are the ones that we're really concerned about.
Over the net?
Yeah. It's not football balls, it's not soccer balls, you know, a real hard.
And how big are the old jeans in the, in the net?
The, the net is an inch and three quarter, so it'll catch, it'll catch.
Is that what you have right now for netting?
Yes. So, um, the other thing is, um, sorry to interrupt.
Is this thirty feet or is that thirty foot?
This, uh, from finish grade to the top is, is thirty feet.
So this is even more than thirty feet?
No, well, this is, the way the section line is, thirty feet from here to here, this is less than thirty feet.
The maximum of thirty feet?
Correct, correct. Maximum of thirty feet from finish grade of the field.
Okay, some cases less than thirty.
Yes. Well, all the way around the edge of the field would be thirty feet. It's just the way, it's just the way the section is cut, because we're cutting it through the burn. You know, the bottom of the netting fence is hidden.
So have, have these balls taken out any windshield or anything like that? I was just wondering, you know, if it's really random and not common happening?
I think we could also accept the condition where we eliminated it from the fifteen-yard line to the fifteen-yard line.
That's a good one, yeah.
Because really, in my mind, if it's lacrosse balls that we're worried about, you know, here's the crease for women, for girls across. Right. And this is the crease for men's across. So I'm concerned about those low-angle shots. And if we're going to the fifteen-yard line of football, that'll collect those low-angle shots. And, you know, in, in this area, it's not as big of a concern.
That's kind of your specialty too, right?
What's that?
Stadiums.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So you're suggesting that you could have two levels of height, in the more, in the more critical areas where balls might get loose? You might have to, you might want to do twenty-five feet or something like that?
We, back here.
I also wonder about the thirty foot, why ten feet all the same?
Uh, because that's the way they're manufactured. So it's a, it's a standard product, twenty feet to thirty feet. You know, we could do a custom of twenty-five, but five feet, you know, is not a huge deal in my mind, so.
So the twenty would be acceptable?
Yeah, we, we could find twenty being acceptable, um, here to the fifteen-yard line. Then just a four-foot chain link fence from fifteen to fifteen in the belly of the field, and then picking up the twenty again, really for, for protection of people outside of the facility.
Wait, sorry, say that again, so you wouldn't put any netting between the two fifteen-yard lines?
Between the two fifteen yards.
It would just be a fence?
Just a bookended.
Okay, but on the ends, you would go, you would still want to go thirty? Because what you're proposing, twenty?
No, twenty, you said twenty.
Okay, you put twenty, okay.
But at the end of the yard field?
Yes.
What about that one, is that, that's also twenty? That's a, what is that?
Or is that going to hit people's houses and has that been?
Up here, um.
Well, once it gets over the property though, the, the town line, we don't have any say over it.
But, but you do here.
There, but not along that side road.
Is clear, is clear a, um, stone wall behind houses on Hovey?
There is.
And which side of the town line is it on?
That I believe is on the Natick side.
Do you have confirmation of that?
When I looked at your ponds last time, I think they were on the western side.
Kind of, maybe houses, you kind of get inside stone wall.
Pre, pre, and now.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Yeah, this one.
It makes sense, the wall, it's just a town line.
I'll have to confirm.
Okay.
Um, either way, that stone wall's going to go away.
It's going to go away?
Yeah, because of the fear.
It's going to millipede.
What are you going to do with stones, anything?
We are, uh, one of the conditions from the exacerbation condition.
Actually, do we have that decision from the conservation?
No, not yet.
You should probably take a look and see what they said.
The three conditions were, um, we had to reset the, the survey with the, the change in the footprint. The, well, they use the, the, from the maps for, for the footprint elevation. The elevation is actually one seventy-four, it's in the bank of the land over here. So we had our surveyor adjust the survey and reset it accordingly, and Michelle was good with that. She just wanted to have it for the record. The other one was, uh, this area right here is currently disturbed, it's almost mowed lawn within the do-not-serv buffer. Rivers has agreed to let that revegetate, so the entire twenty-five foot buffering here will not be maintained anymore. And one of the conditions was, Michelle wanted to have some rollers and stuff to demarcate the edge. So if maintenance is out there, they're not accidentally mowing into the buffer. And also some signage that says this is a.
So that's where the rocks, some of the rocks go?
Yeah, we'll use some of the rocks over there. And we won't, we won't dot them like Morris code, we're, we'll do, we'll try to make it look like natural rock out of things.
No, I'm just, it's what I, I mean, goes down Hovey, 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 whatever it is.
You know that's.
And it's fair, and it's fairly, it's a fairly significant wall, it took me about three feet, am I crazy? This was a couple of weeks ago when I looked, but in place of, well, it's not an insignificant wall, put it that way.
Your survey has it on the west, on the western side.
Pardon?
As it goes north, crossing over into Natick.
It's supposed to oversee stone walls, so, you know, I mean, you can see a stone wall.
Yeah. Anyway, but it, it would be right in this area, right in here.
Yeah. So that, the fate of that stone wall is something that we're, we're seeing.
Is that on western side? Yes, that's on western side.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, it is.
Completely, or does it cross over?
It crosses over as it moves north. But the southern end of it, and more of it is on the westerns, is in western.
So the part in western, we, we'd be able to just.
You want the stones?
No, you.
We want the stones.
Do we want the stones? I'm, I'm serious, I'm, you know, we're having such a terrible time.
No, I, I understand, but I mean, it's just, it's just too bad that, you know, that stone wall, which is not insignificant, that has to go away.
Yeah, yeah.
But having, uh, accepted that it's going to go away. Do, does it matter to you what happens to the?
It would be nice if they can reuse it somewhere on the site.
We could also use, use some of them in the landscape burns.
I mean, I just, it's a.
We could potentially use them to add to the existing stone wall that's out on Winter Street.
That's a great idea.
I guess one of the other things I'm concerned about is the, is the edge, I said before, the edge between the campus and the residential area. It's, it's getting thinner and thinner, and the river is getting bigger. Granted, it's only, it's only a, a field, but between the fence and the scoreboard and everything else, those are fairly significant things to be sitting on the other side of a residence. And I think anything that can be done to bring them down in height, or to block the view, or, or whatever. One of the things that was said, that the ones that were up, twenty-foot ones, was that all the nets would be taken down in winter, and guess what? They weren't. So, you know.
We, no, we encourage our clients to take them down in the winter because, you know, snow load, wind load, ice on them can be damaging to the nets and the poles, and if they want them to last for a while. We typically, you know, we have a chain link fence that's here and here, and a little wraparound at the base of the netting system. Typically, we encourage them to take them down and then zip tie them to the top of the fence during the winter.
Speaking of which, have you done, but the scoreboards away from Winter Street or on the other side?
In terms of sightlines, um, for spectators and for the team areas, this really is the best location. Secondly, the, the, the lights of the board, you know, the LED lights on the boards are pointed away from much as.
Away, so the other side of the point, right, just, yeah, understood. Thanks for putting that on.
And the back, and the back of the boards typically are, are just aluminum, and we're calling for that to be painted completely black. It's going to help fade that some of the.
Maybe we could talk for a little bit about the building itself.
Before we get to the building, I still have some comments on the side. Can you flip it over to the other side? So I guess I don't understand why there's all this new vegetation here, but along the lines of, I see the saying, excuse me. Why, why aren't you doing the same here and there? Because there's, as you said, there's not much here, and a lot of it's going to be taken down because a lot of it is in bad shape. So I don't understand why you're not screening the fields from all the western residences. I mean, I realize that this is pretty narrow compared to this, but you could put in.
Street trees, which would really.
We talked about some trees.
Yeah.
And I, I think we are agreeable to adding some vegetation.
Like the whole thing?
We're sort of throwing all this out of order right now, but that, that's being a suggestion. I think then the question I would have is, what do you think about it, Tim? About the idea of, of clearing the, the deteriorated vegetation out of the, of the area adjacent to the field and planting new street trees along the edge? Is that something that you've?
I think street trees is the right thing to do there, but I think it's, you read, actually, all or none because that bittersweet's going to take over any plantings pretty quickly, so they'd have to probably strip the whole area and put in new.
So take out all the existing trees, take out the bittersweet, and replant everything?
So there's really not a single mature tree along there that's worth?
I mean, we walked out there, I mean, you see full pictures, the ones that are still up there, so they're shrangled out, and so they're very stressed from the bittersweet.
Along the entire line?
I think the challenge is, you know, even if we go in with street trees, we clear the whole area, we go in with street trees, that's really going to open up the site for a period of time visually.
But you wouldn't do any understore, any hedgerow?
It depends on how much screen you want. And, and, and this is a narrow planting area, so they couldn't be huge trees, you couldn't have big wood.
What is, what is the narrow part?
I mean, there's more space here, if you wanted to do.
A little bit more significant calibre.
That maybe would prevent you from the need to put up the larger, you know, bald shields in time. But it would probably be something like arbor biting, I mean, they have to be pretty narrow.
One of the things you said was that this is the front door of, of Rivers. And I think if I was, you know, had this as my campus, I would want the front door to be pretty nice. And part of that is, you know, nice, nice plantings, landscaping, et cetera. And I know that when I drove down farther the street, the rest of it, the whole edge is looking frayed. And it's something that I think, you know, the campus might consider, that the whole edge along Winter Street, might be time for some refurbishment. Whether this is the first step of it, or whatever.
But to Steve's point, why did you propose it along the left hand side but not along the street? I understand your thinking.
Yeah, there is, there would be some existing vegetation that remains that provides some kind of visual...
There was nothing over there.
There was nothing. There are homes now and there are just, they're all being built.
So the new field is, so is that, that white dotted line is a down line? Is that true?
Right.
Yes, so that's where the, partially where the stone wall is. Everything else is...
Kim, to go back to your point about the bittersweet, you're proposing to plant screen planting behind the scoreboards. So is that susceptible to the bittersweet infestation?
Oh, definitely. If they don't take down the bittersweet now.
Yeah, they have some real maintenance.
In that area, but it's gonna creep back and destroy.
Yeah, it'd grow in the middle of the field, just even on the artificial turf.
I mean, David, I'm not out of school with saying that, you know, the school would be willing to add some kind of vegetation out there. It might be a stretch of going and clear cut everything at this point and then provide a complete vegetative buffer. That's a top order.
But right now you're taking, you're stripping all the top soil and everything else for the synthetic fields, right? So you're gonna have earth moving equipment in there anyways.
Yep.
This is a tough one. I mean, speaking, speaking from personal experience, I've, it's part of my front yard. I fought bittersweet for 10 years and finally gave up and just had somebody come in and clear the whole thing out because there was no possible way to keep ahead of it.
Yeah, and that was one of the comments that Michelle made in the wetland area. One of the commissioners in conservation said, you know, we condition that they need to go in and do a face removal program. And Michelle said, you know, that, it's really, it would be eight years of cutting things back, you know, painting the ends and she's like, and then it'll still be there. You know, it's, it's just so problematic.
I mean, I fought bittersweet for many years myself and I loathe these pieces, I really do. When I see people put it as a wreath on their front doors, they're, but, you know, you can do it. And I, you know, when you look at the back, back 40, I can understand you'd never do it there. But when I look again at that narrow strip in the front, I go, yeah, it's painted in the you-know-what, but it can be done.
I'm not saying it can't.
And like to, you know, to Kim's point is, and to your point, it's much easier to maintain if you can mow regularly. I mean, then you, you know, you can deprive the bittersweet, obviously it's an energy source, you can mow it down poison here. But that means you can't have undisturbed plantings in there. It has to be the street tree, you know.
You can put a, you can put a robe on it or something.
It goes underground, that's what I found.
You know, it's one of those things.
So spreads up the ground.
Really, it's really good exercise to pull it up. But instead of getting, instead of getting the weeds, you pull it up.
If it can't ever synthesize, it's gonna die, so. But it just takes, and then it'll all recede anyway.
But, you know, if you say that, we'll never plant anything in western. I mean, that or more poison ivy. I mean, if this was in another street in western, you know, think about it.
I mean, I'm just thinking, replanting here means that we, essentially it's an open landscape for the foreseeable future. I mean, that's, that's what you have to accept.
Many years.
But looking at the pictures, it's pretty much a, it's more than that, it'll be in two years. Especially when they dig up all the earth around it.
So there's a private house, the lawn one that has a pretty good buffer on its side. Does that belong to the school, the one on the opposite side?
This one?
No, that one I know is private, but this one, is that, is that a schoolhouse?
David, do you know?
The head of school lives, yes.
Right, yeah, right. And the other one is a, just a western resident. So they've got some planting there. They might, they've obviously have learned to live with it. But, you know, I'm not sure we need to provide a huge screen between the headmaster's house.
No, but we should, but we...
But it would be nice to have the street.
Again, there's campus line and a residential line. And the campus is growing. And, you know, if this wasn't on the edge of western, if it was somewhere more central, we'd probably be taking a little different look at it, which is something I don't like to say.
So which of those are Winter Streets?
Well, then what do you want?
I'm looking for, I guess, a lone fence.
Wait, 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 no, we have, change of conversation. In the middle of this conversation, we've got a question. So let's take, let's take Tony's question, which is...
This is Winter Street, Winter Street, Winter Street. This is from the field looking back out at Winter Street.
Top row, three right from Winter. Nothing else.
And then these are the homes that are over there on the main apartment.
Are the electrical wires gonna be a problem for street trees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to...
Yeah, they won't be stately, string of maples, they'll have to be, they'll have to be for that.
They can be evergreen. I see one evergreen tree there to the left of it.
I mean, if you're gonna do evergreens, I think you'd have to arborvitae. You can't, you wouldn't be able to plant them always for a year, it's just too...
Looking at, looking at the, at the Winter Street photographs, there's not much screen there as it is, is there?
Especially on that left hand.
Not, not here.
Not there, no.
Where are those pictures of two of them, of course, because that's where the heaviest?
Up here.
Yeah, where are those in the plan?
I believe those are, are over here.
Well, maybe instead of being more iconic street trees, maybe become something more like, you know, Japanese maples or, you know, something that's a flowery tree that's, you know, 20 footer, something like that. That will grow faster, that will be bushy, have a larger crown, that can fit something there. And that will give, you know, it will take a really nice picture for the front of the catalog for Rivers, you know.
You mean something like the small ones?
Or get egregious, right? And they have alley, they have...
Consor tree.
Very, yeah.
And it's, there's no understory, it's all, it's just stone wall. They're, you know, 25 to 30.
And they're quite growing, aren't they? They're quite growing.
Yeah, I mean, they're a little bit quicker.
Well, it's something like that.
How would they do with the power lines?
I knew they'd grow underneath them.
Well, they, they kinda grow in a kind of a shape or sound.
And you, I'm sure you can come up with something, given, given what we're, you know, talking about.
The consorts got killed in the drought. I mean, they really could have been, but yeah, I mean, the idea is that maybe to plant trees that wouldn't interfere with the power lines, that wouldn't be, aren't necessarily arborvitae. Is there an alternative to arborvitae that wouldn't fight with the power?
No.
Not necessarily.
Just, you know, like I had screens and it's sort of a mop. I don't know what the right word is. I think a weather cloud, maybe, you know, crab apple, things like that, that, you know, will grow that height. Can you take a look with the picture, I'll show you, because the fence is 20 feet, so.
Looks like they're about 30 feet. Because the netting is 20.
Yeah, so, yeah, 25, 30.
Crab.
Yeah, exactly, they would look gorgeous there. The original wood boughs got quite...
The Cornell ones are pretty good.
Anyway, that's kind of your job. It's kind of your job to come up with some...
Yeah, I mean, is that something, you know, that the entire board is comfortable with?
Well, I think what, what I'm hearing the whole board say is that we need to impress it. That you can't just let it continue to deteriorate and get beaten out by, by the bittersweet. That we need to develop some kind of a plan for, for making the front yard of River School presentable. You're not just leaving a bunch of orphaned trees to die in the front. So it would, I think that's what everybody's saying.
That's fair, the question is how to do that.
The question is how to do it and what to do. We, we're looking for possible suggestions as to what kind of light the...
I mean, I, I think, you know, if it's not too much to ask, I mean, if it was, is this something that, you know, we can condition? If we say we're agreeable to, say, 15 deciduous trees and...
I could just fill a number out.
Yeah, I wanna see it, I've actual planned showing how many and what size it goes in it and all that.
I, I know that you'd probably want us to close the hearing in late, but it sounds like this is an issue that's gonna take one more hearing session for us to get comfortable with. That's what it sounds like to me.
And I think, I mean, also we've talked about bringing the fence down and making it just a bookend, so all that needs to be done as well.
Well, that could be conditional.
But it's, it's good to see it all in one piece.
Now, can we, okay, if we're sort of finished with the landscaping along the street, maybe we could talk for a few minutes about the building?
Absolutely.
All right. Hello, I'm David Erhardt, architect with Daryl Designs. We're working with River School on the, we were here recently for the upper school academic building and center construction. So this is a small utility building. It'll be used basically to store athletic equipment adjacent to the fields. It's a little under 800 square feet. It's 48 feet by 16 feet. And then there's a 12 foot canopy in the front. And the purpose of the canopy is to provide shelter for the student athletes, parents, in event that they're in the rain or thunder, lightning. And it's a, it's a one-story building. We have large doors at each end so they can bring in large equipment. And initially, it'll be 100% storage. And then what we are roughing in for future players to unisex toilet rooms. But we don't have sewer to this location yet. And so we'll, we'll just be roughed in until we have sewer at that point.
Sewer meaning on-campus sewer?
Yes. And the, just mentioned that it's asphalt shingles, lapsed siding on different construction. It's 16 feet long. It's about 21 feet at the top of the coupla. And we really, you know, architecturally, we, we thought it would make sense to have this building tie in with some of the other buildings at the front of campus. Bradley Music Building, as well as Blackwell, the server building, and the barn and the Willis House across the street. You know, we're trying to use the same vocabulary in this building that's used in all of those buildings. And it's a pretty simple little building. As far as lights and the dark sky compliance, we're just putting recessed lights under the front canopy for lights. So they'll, you know, shine down, about five to 10 foot candles in the front of the building that when they're turned on. And then in the back, where we have the future toilet rooms, we just have one fixture, same thing, it's recessed. So there's no, all the lights going down, it cuts off, you know, at the edge of the canopy. And it's pretty low, you know, five to 10 foot candles.
Five foot, 10 foot candles is, that's a, that's pretty bright. I mean, it's kind of standard as averaging one foot candle on the ground.
For parking and walkways, yeah.
So 10 foot candles is, you know, that's a geometric increase, so.
We, we can dial that back. I mean, it's not, that's not an issue.
This is only supposed to be used mostly during the daytime with dusk, right?
Exactly.
Field light?
Yeah, the field lighting, so it's, you know, get them tracked as well.
Might be helpful to... You're gonna light the field with field candles?
I, I mean, are they gonna be automatic? Do some have to be on all night for security?
No, they don't need to be on all night. No, they would, they would...
Your timer?
Yeah.
It might be helpful to translate the foot candles if the lumens...
Okay.
That would, you know, we...
We do, we can provide that. We have a fixture cut sheet that we submit with the initial package that we can, that we can confirm the lumens on that.
Do you have a lighting protection system like that?
No.
So you're just gonna put the kids underneath there, okay? I know, I know, I could...
The trees.
There you go.
Tree, the trees.
My net pole's on.
Exactly, exactly. I knew they were pretty strong.
Any other questions about the building?
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to go back to the sign.
Sure.
Go back to the, the scoreboard if I can.
Sure.
If you look at the stadium seats go up for three or four tiers?
Five rows.
Five rows. So I guess I'm wondering why the scoreboard has to do that far?
So these are mockups of, of the boards. You know, just a, a simple signage at the top, sticking in the river school. And then for various athletic events, I believe this is for the football multi-burgess field. And then this is for the lacrosse field. So they have penalty times for lacrosse. And then they also have the passing penalties on the football, because that will also reduce for lacrosse.
And how high up are the poles you're sitting on?
Uh, this will be 10 feet off the ground. And that's really to stop any kind of shooting or any kind of handling.
So on the upper...
Right, there are the walls, two signs. Is that, is that the berm where those signs will be located?
No, this, this is a, this is a...
Yeah.
James.
He didn't give you the good one.
I, I included this image just for representative purposes. This is at the Bead Country Day School in Brookline. We did that a number of years ago. But this entire field is wrapped with 20 and 30 foot high netting. And as you can see, with the backdrop of the natural vegetation, it really disappears into the vegetation.
Except the poles.
Yeah, depends on pole shower doors.
Except for the areas where we don't have any netting. It seems to be a lot of areas.
That bench for the athletes is covered? Is, are you proposing a similar one for all?
It, it's just this part, so the awning overhang.
Cause I mean, that is...
We're not gonna be including the brick or anything like this. This is what we did over at Hager, but this is the same type of unit.
But you'll need a variance for that as well?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's over the temporary or the...
It's within the 850s up there.
Yeah.
But is it, I mean, it's pretty significant structure to not know exactly what it looks like in elevation and everything, because it's right next to the street.
It is in the plans. We, we have a section of it.
Are these talking about what you, what you'd see if you're driving down the street?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's too significant to just treat it as a fence or something.
And that canopy is gonna be permanent, even if it's temporary, they're gonna take it down.
And like, what are the materials? What's the roof?
The roof is, is a fabric. So the, the same unit is installed over at None Such, the synthetic turf field that Rivers put in, I believe, two years ago. And it's been tremendously successful. People walk, you know, parents come to None Such and they're like, oh, that is a great team area. So that's why the school wants to incorporate it into the...
What's, what's it?
Uh, steel. So black steel and then it's a cantilever.
And how tall of is that pond with a cantilever, I guess, whatever?
I believe. Let me just double check that for you.
You're going up five tiers, so that's like five feet. That's a pretty big front.
Yeah. Is it possible it also have a back like that?
No, no, it's gonna be the four foot high chain of fence, that we talked about.
I really thought we were... Somebody else had four. There you go, that's the...
Bench for the athletes.
Leave them free box that like...
It's just a bench, it's not a wheelchair seat.
No, it's just a bench.
It's just a bench. And what is the bench, the lumina?
The bench will be powder coated aluminum. So seven and a half feet to the front edge.
And two.
And then the peak is probably nine to 10 feet.
Oh, okay.
Seven and a half.
So it's not the five tiers underneath it, it's just a bench?
Right.
Yeah.
It's not the five tiers that were underneath?
No, no, no.
See, that's why it's still.
But it turns out that the size, the scoreboards, it just goes by that man. And, and, and you were saying that the poster ten feet high comes out to twenty-three feet.
And that's just on a berm, too.
So it's not, it's less than the thirty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Right. And also it's on a berm that's like four feet tall? How tall is a berm?
Five feet.
Five feet, boy, that gets you back up.
Yeah, that's true.
We could potentially lower it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't some of the five-foot berm take the place of the ten-foot height?
For sightlines, yes.
For sightlines.
I mean, honestly, if somebody's gonna do vandalism, they'll get up there anyways.
They'll find a way.
They will, they'll find a way.
Nobody's gonna vandalize.
I know. I mean, yours thinks that would.
Doesn't happen.
Yeah.
It's just that, really what it is, is a scenery.
Yeah. But if you can work with the actual sightlines in order to reduce it, that would be great.
Yeah, that would, that would help a lot.
Can you tell for thirty seconds on the synthetic field?
Absolutely.
Did it prevent snow, help or take the issue to the environment in the short or the long term?
It doesn't. So.
We covered that in the school three sessions.
We did, and the Western High School project was within the, was it the groundwater?
Yeah, it was in the top rejection district.
Thank you. So we went through that. We provided the groundwater testing information that we performed over at the elementary school on concrete that showed that all stormwater that vertically drains through the field and the chrome rubber and the sand has no heavy metal re-shave. Or at least well below the standards of the groundwater. In terms of health and human safety, there's really no issues there. There's some false citizen science out there. They claim that there's some issues with the chrome rubber. But there's over ninety peer-reviewed and published studies that are available. Let's say there is no linkage to any kind of health issues with the infill or something.
And how long does the field last?
Uh, they're warranty for eight years. We tell our clients to expect anywhere between ten to twelve, maybe even more depending on the use and maintenance.
And they replace just the top layer of the field?
They replace, they replace the carpet. So it's really just a top layer. And when that field is at the end of its useful life, you can sell, that's the infill in it. And then reuse the infill, and then the carpet gets replaced. And now, in the past year or so, the carpets can be recycled. So Field One over at the high school was sent to be recycled.
And after twelve years, why is it not replacing after twelve years? Does it become dangerous to the environment, or just not usable by?
No, not usable for sports. So the fibers themselves are made of polyethylene. They lose their structural integrity and tend to lay over. So there's really no ball control on the speed. It's basically like playing a softer paint. The ball will just roll and roll and roll.
Oh, okay.
And the fibers tend to break down from UV. So they, they don't, they start to split apart to the point where you're really just playing on the same rubber.
Thanks, appreciate that.
You said something about you couldn't be painting it every year instead of doing something else, so it doesn't?
So, yeah, the lines, the field lines themselves. You have two options with these fields. You can either paint them with a water-based paint, or you can permanently install the lines with colored synthetic tints. And Rivers has elected to paint all the lines, because as the season goes on, those lines will fade. They're not as brilliant in the, in the winter. And it gives them a little bit more flexibility, to be honest with you, in terms of how they look like the starting fields.
And where's the naming opportunity sign?
For a different school.
That is, that isn't.
That is, they're proposing that.
It is. That, that, really, that's over here. That's where the student athletes will come in.
Okay.
And they just wanted some kind of gateway into the facility.
Have the torches, a few sparks, and plain there, just full propane?
That's unlighted, of course.
Unlighted.
Yeah.
It's your chance, Al, naming opportunity.
That's the name of the field. The field is a naming opportunity field.
Al Ala.
That doesn't require, because I mean, that's a big structure.
It's a structure, but that one's within the setback.
Within the setback.
Outside of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so that's not a ZDA issue or anything like that, right? Not a fence.
Okay, so a couple of questions. First of all, has Dave Conway looked at the drainage and the engineering aspect of this?
Yeah, Dave is satisfied with that.
When you say satisfied, do we have any kind of an email or a memo?
Yeah, yeah, we do. He had, he had a colleague look at it, and he sent me an email on that saying that they're satisfied. He did ask you guys to redo a modeling method, and you folks did that, right?
Yes.
And he was, he was okay with it. Then, yes, he's satisfied that the drainage will work as proposed. And I, yeah, so we do have an email for him.
So right now it drains away from the wetlands, I'm assuming?
Well, no, it just goes down, right?
Down the wetlands.
It goes down. It goes down into the field. Water will sit, basically the entire field is a giant recharge base. So, and we have very good soils out there. Challenge is the water is also very hot. But a lot of the water will actually recharge into the natural groundwater system. That entire wetland is groundwater fed. So it'll move around underground. We do have two discharge points that are going into the wetlands. So if, you know, those heavy rainfall events, back-to-back events, that's the only problem that goes into the wetland. And Michelle was, wasn't clear with that. And the council, she.
And I'm monitoring.
Okay, one other question, and I'm not sure why we're doing this. This is, this is for some reason, a special permit review and a limited site plan review all at once.
Yes.
I don't know why we didn't do it. It's two, it's two hearings, but never mind. And one of them is a special permit.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about the earth removal aspect of this. So that's a special permit decision that we need to make as well as limited site plan review. So what's the story on that?
So we have, on average, twelve to eighteen inches of topsoil on the site. That needs to come out.
Because of the field?
Because of the field. You can't build a field over topsoil because there's organic content in it. Over time, that organic content will compress or break down, and then you'll have this in the synthetic surface. So the topsoil has to be removed.
Where's it going?
Uh, the topsoil will become property of the contractor. We're trying to use as much topsoil as we can on-site in the scoreboard berm, in the berm along Hovey. You know, if we are going to be doing some renovations of the landscape along Winter Street, we'll also be able to use some.
And do you have quantities?
Uh, we do.
You're gonna have to modify the problem. If we're, if we're looking at landscaping, what is it?
Slightly, I mean, landscaping along Winter Street isn't gonna take, you know, several thousand yards. And we're talking about several thousand yards of that soil.
How many, three thousand or?
No, I think closer to seven, seven thousand? I'll have to confirm that for you.
That's not a significant change.
It's seventeen inches, twelve to eighteen.
What are you bringing back?
We're bringing, we're bringing in structural free-draining granular fill.
Right, and do you have a quantity for that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So. Pardon, twelve thousand. That's assuming an eighteen-inch pulp out of course to say.
Yeah.
And then we are importing approximately seven thousand. And then it'll be the free-draining stone base that's in.
And then make up the twelve thousand, the other five.
Excuse me?
Why are you bringing less in than you could?
Because what's not included, we're bringing in seven thousand granular fill. So that brings us subgrade, and then we have the engineered.
Field on top.
The engineered stone base for the field on top of that.
Okay, so we need to issue a special permit on that, that we're amenable for removing twelve thousand cubic yards of material and replacing it with fill.
And there's no place, I mean, I'm assuming this building's not according to a campus master plan? And there's no place in that future campus master plan to stockpile this for future use?
Zero. Best drive for that. Otherwise, they'd love to take it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's beautiful soil.
There's, it's just not, we looked at that, there's just not space available on campus to stockpile.
We're just thinking that there was another project that was coming up that would require.
I was gonna say, get a lot of, a lot of topsoil, good for him.
Alright, okay, so what I would suggest, Emi.
Yep.
We're gonna continue this site plan review hearing and this, and the special permit hearing.
Yep.
Schedule them separately next time.
Okay.
Okay. Schedule the site plan review hearing first.
Okay.
Okay? And as I understand it, what we're talking about is taking a look at the Winter Street planning. That we're gonna be looking at the, at the impact of the netting when it reduces from thirty to twenty feet and is eliminated between the fifteen-yard lines of the football field.
Okay.
We're gonna look at the elevation of the cover for the bench along Winter Street. We're gonna look at modifying the scoreboard sign so that the sightlines aren't, are maintained and, and the supports reduced accordingly, so that you could, you wind up with about a twenty-five-foot-high total sign berm configuration, or less. And we are looking at the, at the lighting, the footcand, the ten-foot candles and translation of the lumens of the building lighting. We're looking at what to do with the stones. We need a better idea of what, of the fate of the stones that are being removed. Anything else that ever get anything?
Talked about how you'd fence.
Pardon?
Yeah, thirty to twenty.
Thirty to twenty.
Yeah.
Right, and then the.
And front them, so, looks like a good elevation drawing if you could, along Winter Street.
We are in the.
The bench, yep.
Yeah, that would follow along with that.
Okay, is there anything else that we've mentioned that I?
We're giving them enough guidance on the trees on the next year.
I think we need, I think Tim needs to give them some input on it. Alright, great, thank you.
So will we be?
We'll continue to what day?
Twentieth.
Twentieth of March.
Yeah.
Okay, so next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Is it the permit master?
Thank you everyone.
Tripod.
Set it up for you, Jay.
Okay, we're ready to start the public hearing for one forty-six Coneet Road, site plan approval, Seazero Road. RGFA five thousand seven hundred ninety-three square feet. Jay, are you making the presentation?
Yes, portion of it, yes. We have the architect with us tonight.
Okay, good. Usual rules, twenty minutes yourself of the presentation and the rest of the time. Maybe we can do it this way this time. Questions afterwards?
Yeah. The title's yours.
It was the one.
No, it was February, the week before the corporate. So here we are, we have the neighborhood locus for the RGFA. So we have sixteen residential butters within three hundred feet of the property. Two direct of butters. The site is on the corner of Seazero and Coneet. From the, looking at all sixteen of butters, the largest house in that, in the three hundred feet is sixty-one hundred square feet, sixty-one hundred fifty-four square feet, to be exact. And it actually has a low of just over twenty-six hundred square feet, so it's a pretty big variance of the houses in the area. Our two direct of butters are, the highest is five thousand ninety-two, and the second, the lower is the four thousand sixty-one. We're proposing, as Al had mentioned, fifty-seven ninety-three. The former house was just under thirty-four hundred square feet, it's thirty-three ninety-six. The average RGFA in the neighborhood is just over four thousand, so.
Is the original house already gone?
No, no, it's still there. So here's the existing house. So we have, as I mentioned, here's Coneet Road, Seazero North is up. We have this lot that's bisected by a stream that takes drainage from the Seazero side, pushes it lower to the Coneet side. So we have a twenty-five-foot notice curb on either side, we have a hundred-foot buffer zone, that's on property zoning for the area here. It's a residence beat zone. We have existing double-cut driveway to Coneet Road, garage, garage under, basement garage here. Stairs that go up to the first floor. And then we also have, this house was kind of built in two phases. So this was the original house on the side, and then they eventually did a large addition here. They then added in the accessory structure, which I think was like a.
Project.
Project, yeah. Project, yeah. And then we have the septic system in the back, which actually we're gonna make, keep the field in the back. Tanks from the front, which we're gonna relocate up to the top. You have a butter here, just the north side on Coneet. And then you have, here are the direct of butter, showing right now.
And there's a butter across Seazero Road.
Correct, yeah.
That's pretty visible.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a couple of fellow photos from the sidewalk. So what we're proposing to do is show the plot plan first before the site plan. Take down the existing house. So the existing house in the show, you know, I showed it on the, on the actual site plan. It's, it's in this ballpark. So the, the new garage is back further than the former house. So we take in the house, pushing it back. It's a modern home, it's a flat roof. So we're about a foot below the Maxridge Labo, which is the thirty-two feet from grade, as opposed to the normal thirty-seven feet. Same exact idea as the original house. Garage under, first, and so it's basement garage under. We have a set of stairs that comes up to the first floor, and then we have a second, but the only difference is now we have a second floor on the house as opposed to the, just the single floor on the top. We have a walk-up on this side, and we have the stairs going up, and eventually go up to the backside of the house. There is ledge on site, so the way they've built the house out is they've had, you know, full foundation here. They have this as frost walls to kind of keep, keep out of the idea of trying to get away from excavating any kind of large amount of ledge. Singing with here, so it's gonna be some unfinished basement, finished basement, and then frost walls for the rest of it. We're keeping the existing tennis court in the back end, the building, the terrace between the house and that, so it's just gonna be on fill. They're putting a, dropping in a pool area, so it's, think of like a container pool. It's like basically made out of a, a form of container that would go on a train. Drop it in, and that's the pool. So no excavation for, none of that, never worry about it. And that's gonna, it's gonna go walk right off of the terrace, which comes off the first floor. We're gonna get rid of one of the curb cuts. We're gonna fill that in with plantings. We are using it as part of the drainage for the, for the system. The actual roof itself is a green roof, which is nice. So that's gonna take care of some of the drainage for the site. We're doing porous asphalt. Um, we're doing porous asphalt, permil and pavers all around this area. Um, we're gonna utilize the driveway to put up, to do the, to do the actual utilities, we're trying to keep everything tight inside the actual project site, um, and we're not proposing any disturbances out here. The total amount of trees removed are six. They're all located determinedly inside the house.
Retaining walls?
Yep, so they have, uh, they're all existing, um, except for here, that's a, that's a proposed retaining wall that goes up to some of the, those existing rocks that are in there. It's conforming to step backs so that, but as you go up that area, that's gonna be a tall one because it's going up those stairs. So yeah, so that's the only one there.
How tall?
This one here, it'll vary in height, so when I, when I pull up the site plan, I can give you a second to look at the grades. But yeah, it's, it kind of changes the grade as you're going up the grade with it.
One of the back is existing?
No, this one, sorry, this one here, this is proposed, that's a, that's gonna be an eighteen inch to two foot high wall. When we place the house, um, the grade for the septic system and trying to keep the first floor tight to what the existing grades was, what we did is we wanted to keep the, the first floor only about a foot above existing grade, so we can kind of not have to grade a lot around the house. We had to cut this down a little bit because of the grading for the breakup for the septic system, and so we had to put that, that wall in that area so we would be able to keep the grades where we are and not losing much weight.
But the setbacks, you said that there's a stream down there?
Correct.
You said, you said there was a hundred and two hundred foot buffer?
Yes, yep, so the, oh, sure. So in the existing conditions, again, it's, it's not highlighted, so we see it on the site plan, but the buffer zone comes through here.
Yeah.
So there's that, this line right there.
Right.
And then you have the twenty-five foot no disturbs, which is this line here.
So within the buffer zone, we, uh, confirm for me what is allowed in that buffer zone and what isn't?
So any disturbance is allowed within the buffer zone.
Yeah.
You just gotta mitigate it, so with drainage or anything like that.
So you can build within that buffer zone?
Correct. You can't build within, uh, the no disturbs or you're not, typically you're not, you don't build within a no, so the tennis court's already inside it, so we're not touching that.
Right.
The actual, taking out this portion of driveway, so we are doing some work in the no disturbs, but I've already talked with Michelle, we have to follow those intent with them anyway, um, about the work we're doing here because we're removing a lot of a previous area inside the twenty-five foot.
Right, but there seems to still be the hammerhead that's within that spot.
Yep, which is the, all part of the, contained within the actual original, so here's the original driveway, we're cutting it off right there.
Okay.
Yep.
It's an intermittent stream, is that what it is?
Correct, yep.
So it's not, you, you don't trigger the river's head?
Correct.
That's, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so we have, so this.
That was a question, I kept, kind of figured out in my head.
Exactly, yeah, so this was perennial, this would be a hundred foot repair.
Right, okay.
That's the time that you can't touch.
Thank you. It's like, I think stream, I think, moving water.
Right, right, automatically think of a perennial stream. So here's the site plan, to give you a little better idea of what's going on, so here's, as I mentioned, here's the existing house, highlighted right there, so you can see that we're, we're back of the, of the existing garage, we're back of that first portion of house that ever got built, pulling it off the actual, uh, of Conant Road. So as we come up through here, here's the grades we had talked about, so the, the, the basement slab is gonna, I mean, our garage slab's gonna be at one sixty point seven, and by the time you work your way up through this entire area, this is one sixty-eight, so at the top, top of the wall, so as you work it through the stairs, this wall eventually is gonna be at some point probably four to six feet tall at the highest point, and then it's gonna then build up in grade through it. So this area, now I'll show you at the cross-sections, this is all lower than all this part, so you actually have one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine existing grades, and then this area's gonna be basically about one sixty-one for you. And then as this area comes up and we set the stairs up, then that's one more stuff going up through there.
It's a hell of a contour change.
Right, right, and you can, you can notice from the existing house, that was all, seeing as I think the stairs went right up towards the house.
Could shovel out in winter?
Yeah. It's what actually, yeah, it gives us a room for, 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 for snow piling in that section there. But this is what I mentioned before, we, we have a little bit of grade change here, minor amount, and, because we want to utilize the existing features on site, so we're not taking any of the trees down on top, here's a limited work, we want it right along that edge, is a very nice piece of ledge I'll crop, there's a, exist, a lot of really cool existing field stone walls that are on site that we're using there, um, there's another piece of ledge that we're gonna try to use, utilize on that side right there. Um, and as you go through the site, you can see little snippets of different field stone walls that we're all keeping for the site, um, we wanna keep that character. The, uh, as you walk through this area here, this piece of ledge is higher than you are, so as you're gonna come through the first floor, you're not gonna be able to see through this first floor to the neighbor, you actually have to get on the second floor to see any portion of that house. The one that's really open that you had mentioned was this house here, um, so we actually, we actually added some additional plantings, so when I bring up the landscape plant, um, we add additional plantings along this side, so these are the little sections of plantings that we have, so we added some here, we added some down here, which was for that C twenty Sears Road that we could see through, and then there was another opening where the other fence was, so we added some down through that area there.
Is that a structure south of the tennis court?
This here, it's a, it's like a little, it's a trellis.
Trellis?
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
Perla.
It's perla. Okay, is that, is that existing?
It isn't existing though.
Okay, so that's another, that's another structure, okay.
The, uh, yeah, the intended is to be a patio with just a roof, so it had no walls.
Like zeebo?
Zeebo, correct, yep. The, um, and then here is the, as we get rid of the actual second curb cut, um, we turn into the, uh, to the, the rain garden there, and then we have, um, some nice rhododendrons, uh, that are in the middle of the, the double cut, we're gonna take and we're gonna replace right at the street, utilize that to give, and then we have grading plantings in the middle, so this whole area's all gonna be planted out, this is where you know.
Who's doing the, the landscaping presentation?
I am.
You are? Just doing it right now.
Stepping out of your comfort zone there, Jay.
I'm way out of my comfort.
Just trying to sneak that out. Hey, Jay, just to, you got that one up, uh, so it's on Conant.
Yeah.
Plenty of, there's a three-car garage there?
Correct, correct.
Plenty of room for cars to turn around and come out, headlights first.
Exactly, yeah, so what we did is utilizing that existing driveway, this is that, uh, so basically you have a couple, you can, you have plenty of space to be able to come in, turn around and get out that way.
Fantastic.
Yep.
And then how high did the retaining wall get up?
So that, from here?
Yeah.
So that's the one that's gonna be about four to six feet exposed of that, that, that wall as you, as you're looking at it through this section here.
Okay.
And from this, from this side, you're not gonna see anything.
Yeah, right.
What's the wall made of?
That, that right there, we were gonna, it's probably gonna be, um, we think of doing like a poured wall with a, with a facade to kind of, to keep for the cost, um, to make it look like a stone wall, but we don't, because we're not using, we're not taking down any of the existing stones on site, we're not taking any of those walls, so we won't, can't really utilize that. And because it's a, it's a, because it's gonna be over four feet tall, I don't wanna do it as like a, like a field stone.
That's true. We know where you can get some stones.
So you're saying it's a concrete poured wall that's gonna have like a stone facade?
Stone stamped?
Yeah.
To the concrete?
Yes, no, no, like a.
Vineyard.
Vineyard.
Oh, it is gonna be vineyard, okay.
So it'll look like a field stone wall, so anybody who's visiting will look like a field stone wall to walk up to.
Is the elevation of the street and at the garage the same or do you go up?
It's a slight incline, so it's just.
So when you're driving by and you, everything's covered, everything's screened, you're gonna look up and you're gonna see three garage doors?
Yes, yeah. Which they see it right now, we can see is the, there's these two here and then it's the portion of house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The two areas, sorry.
No, go ahead, Don, go ahead.
The two areas of screen planting.
Yeah.
What are you proposing in those areas? Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Here we go.
So originally, we had, um, we had no plantings down here, uh, prior, prior to the sidewalk, we had three here, so we added a couple more and I'll go over in depth of what they are. At the sidewalk, we had nine trees in this area, and what we did is we added another five, uh, and we actually bumped everything up in size. The, um, this is the area we're showing for, to take in the existing rhododendrons and put them in that area. So what we put down here is we put, um, uh, a white spruce and, uh, two white spruces and a white fir.
Siz.
The sizes are ten to twelve for the, uh, white spruce here, this is twelve to fourteen white spruce and then a ten to twelve white fir. And then on this side, we did the same thing, we did same sizes, we did, uh, twelve to fourteen for one of the spruces, ten to twelve for that, and ten to twelve for the white fir. What we also would like to do is, there's that, that wood fence that's on site that's falling down, um, we wanna remove that entirely, which actually goes all the way around the site, we wanna remove that entirely and it's shown on this plan here, and change it to a black chain link fence with the top rail gone and just run it out with a runner, and just, we're gonna get rid of this, they used to have, there's a gate here that's falling down. We're gonna close that up with plantings, because we don't care about that one. There was a, there was actually a walkway, we used to come through here, we're gonna give that up, give that naturalized. They just wanna use one gate here to get on to, to Sears Road and then be the rest of it be just to be a black chain link fence, and what we did is we tried to make it so it went in and out of the trees, and you can see they're pretty far off the property line, which is here, kind of hide behind the trees. We did run it a little bit tight there and then we ran it up and kind of run it through the trees as we come down, it goes into the ledge there and it comes around. We have a couple of young kids, they kind of wanna just kind of wrangle it inside that.
Well, is that sort of a glorified pool enclosure?
The, uh, the pool itself is gonna have its own enclosure.
Oh.
Just around the pool.
Oh, yeah, well, you, you'd have to by code.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but yeah, so, so from here, um, these were all, these were all ten to twelve foot, uh, originally, and so what we have now is we changed this spruce to, to, uh, twelve to fourteen, um, we have this red pine, which is twelve to fourteen, we actually put in the one gnawy spruce in this corner here, which is fourteen to sixteen, um, and then we, we, we have a couple of the sprinkled ten to twelve still in there, but we have this white pine, which that one's gonna be twelve to fourteen, this is a gnawy spruce that's gonna be ten to twelve, so we kind of spread them out a little bit and added some additional heights that Kim had recommended.
Okay.
Lighting?
Who is still an architect?
It's actually an architect from Canada.
From where?
Canada. So that's. So, and this, this is, it was funny because I didn't, I didn't notice it at first, Kim noticed it when we did the submission, so we submitted the actual landscape plan and it was all metric, so all the heights of the trees were, were in centimeters.
Huge tree, look at that!
Exactly, right.
Twenty years tree.
Right, right, you make trees big in Canada.
So I'll wa- I'll walk through the lighting just to kind of give you an idea of what they look, so this is the one pool light, this is that savvy light that a lot of people use for pool light, this is the, uh, the steplights, so it's, it's built into the wall and it shines down, this is, uh, the sconce, so the, the light source is up top, and then this, these are the recess lights.
Hey, tell me a little bit about the pool savvy light, what is that?
Sure, so that, it's, um, it's a, it's got a low lumen count, what it does is, uh, it has a.
We don't have to put now five hundred lumens?
Right, right, it's only, it's actually, yeah, it's, uh, it's only four hundred and thirty lumens.
Where does it go?
So it's only, it goes on one end, and so the, so the, the, the reason why it's so low is it actually, it's a colored light, so it's in a bright white, and so it's, uh, so then it just goes on one end right there.
Oh, to one?
Yeah.
One end?
Yeah. So we've used those up many times on a lot of the projects, because it's, if you stay away from the bright white, then your lumen count will be really low.
Where are the others?
So we have, so these are, so here, these are the sconces that go along the edge here, um.
The recess?
Sceses.
Okay.
Yeah, so those are the wall lights, so the, and then the recess are the greens, so here, I mean, the front entry right there, so the green dots are the recess lights, and then the red here are the wall li- are the wall sconces, so that's these here. Yeah, and then these are the recessed here, and then these are the wa- these are the actual stair lights. The total lumens we have is, uh, nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety.
Where's the generator and the AC?
So we have. Right now, we don't, we don't have a generator on the site. The AC unit is in a, is in a front, which is right there. So we kind of hit it with some of the foundation plantings.
And it's facing into that big ledge?
Yeah.
That's nice.
Just one unit?
Just one unit, yeah.
The core of that building's right on the.
It's right on there, yeah.
Right on.
Yeah, the, uh, from the plot plan, it's, um, it's just under a foot, so it's, uh, thirty-five point eight, so it's ten inches from the setback.
Good, good surveyor.
Right.
Um, are you reusing any of the existing foundations or slabs for this building?
No, we're not, no.
Um, am I allowed to ask how long construction and demolition might be, or is that not in our permit to ask that question?
Uh, we manage construction impacts a lot, I have to say.
Okay, so, yes, just, you know, I don't know if you've done a, uh, construction schedule or not, how long do you think demolition is, and I'm assuming you're gonna be hauling off whether you're recycling or not, I don't know, again, if we have anything to say about that or?
We have, um, well, the, the, just to get into the volume counts, we just talked, a little bit of what you're talking about, um, this is a net cut site for a hundred yards, so it's about a five-foot cut and about a four hundred yard fill, um, and that's what, we have to haul off about, so three or four truckloads are gonna be coming off of the fill. We don't plan on using any of the materials, it's, it's the, the original, this, this portion of the house is fairly old, um, and then this section here, I guess, wasn't, it isn't, wasn't kept up that often, so it's not like there's a lot of materials at the house and we want to be able to use, or you can, we can have somebody look at it, if you wanna try to recycle it. But it's weird because, uh, there actually, one thing we would, we would have been talking about is, um, we're thinking of, we might go for the variance, uh, having them stay in the house while this house gets built, which I know is, this is a, it's a, it's not always granted.
But sometimes it makes sense.
Yeah, so that, so that, so the vet, that, so that's one thing where we've been talking about, whether or not we're gonna demo this out right at the beginning, or we're gonna hold off on doing it to the end, it's because the, because the way this is built, I mean, they could build it this way.
Hopefully, like, it'll sort of last, eh?
Right.
Question vacation. Well, are you gonna be doing the last?
We're hoping to stay away from it, like, because of the weights, the weights, yeah.
They're lending your.
Yeah.
So they're giving the most, might have to go here.
Yeah, so we're hoping to just.
Aerosmith.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive, this is one of these rare projects coming to board after they got one of the blast. It's called respecting our land for once, like, wow, it's.
Yeah, I know, the, it's great architecture.
They have a little bit more basement than you think, I don't think they're gonna hit some blasting, but.
When was the original house built?
The, this little portion here?
Yeah.
I think it was like forty-six, forty-eight, more than forty-eight.
The addition was nineteen sixty-five.
It was a very contemporary house, it's been left, I actually know of previous owners since we were even let go.
Yeah.
It's kind of sad, right?
So how long, if you don't, if you don't do that, no, there's, there's the demo and everything else gonna take?
We haven't gone.
Projects take.
We haven't gone in the timelines, but typically you're always looking at about eighteen months.
From demo to the, to occupancy?
That's normally the timeline you set on these.
Architecture. Um, who's here? You didn't bring larger boards? Do you have anything?
Yep, I.
Thank you.
Before you start, let's, let's see if, if we can get anything up on the screen here. This is being broadcast, this is, yeah. Many thousands of people are watching on television.
At least you got this, this is where, that's where my stuff starts.
Is it visible?
Yeah.
So, let's see, it's a fifty-seven ninety-three gross square foot house, the idea for the house, uh, given the grade change across the site was to, um, go with a terraced massing that would minimally disturb the existing trees on the site and the existing landscape to the extent possible, while also kind of celebrating the landscape by having these terraces, uh, you know, which provide outdoor spaces in the clearing here where the, the tennis court and some of the more open existing spaces, so the, the idea for the house then was, uh, thinking, but we, we were limited, you know, that the garage entrance, uh, needed to be on the low side here, so we were trying to nestle the garage and, while still having it screened with existing trees, uh, from this edge of the site, uh, and then we're, uh, as was mentioned before, augmenting that with a rain garden and some additional plantings, we're removing part of the existing driveway, so it's also screened. And then, um, one circulates, uh, around the garage, uh, to the north to the main entrance, um, which is visible and you're welcome to look at the plans here, um.
There's a whole series of, of perspectives there.
Yeah, so you've got these that you can look at too, and look at your plans up on.
Okay.
Here, you can just roll back and forth with this. Yeah, you just go back and forth with the remote point where you need to.
Okay. Wait, where's the pointer?
Top is the pointer, yeah.
Top's the pointer. Top's the pointer. Uh, so the circulation here, uh, is along the side of the garage. There are some terrace planters here, which were mentioned previously with some kind of, uh, boulders and other things that, that define the main entrance to the house. Here you can see it in many ways, it's their best place for me to stand. Let's see, that, so then the main entrance is at, uh, you know, one seventy-one grade, which is roughly meeting the existing grade at the top of the site here. The massing is, uh, two bars here, this one, did I do that? Okay, um, uh, this one is clad in Western red cedar. This is, uh, am I doing that or is it...
This computer has the issue.
Welcome to West.
We're all in...
The, um, so the main entrance is at the junction between this larger volume with the living spaces and then the kind of secondary volume that's clad in stucco here. The living spaces all face out onto this terrace with a view of the tennis court and the mod pool here, which is a, a shipping container actually that's recycled for use as a pool. So there, it's a pretty interesting, uh, business model, I think, but it also allows for a, a linear lap pool that fits into a limited amount of space there. Uh, the, um, let's see, the second floors, there are four bedrooms in the house in the second floor. Um, it's two facing north and then two facing south and opening onto these, the master as a terrace above the dining room space. The second bedroom as a small terrace here. The roofs are, uh, are flat for a good portion of the house. There's a vegetate roof over the garage. Uh, and then these will be a modular paving system for the terraces. And then the uppermost roof is membrane roof.
What color is the membrane?
The, I'm hoping, I mean, you know, we haven't picked everything yet, but the intent is uh, that the, the windows and, um, eaves have a kind of darker trim, you know, it's either aluminum or, so it may be a darker gray color, and so then we would get a roof membrane color that would match that.
So it's medium gray?
Yeah, medium gray, probably, that's my guess.
Is that the penetration pattern or is this, is it different?
Uh, oh, this is an older drawing, so that's, that's the latest and greatest here. Uh, we, yeah, there...
Yep, it's funny.
We're working out some things with, uh, egress windows and everything, and so, but they, it's been, uh, and the number of divisions in the windows and kind of costing of all that, and so there have been a few changes, there are fewer divisions in the windows right now. Uh, so, the palette, then, it's the, the Western red cedar. It'll be very simple window trim, uh, either aluminum or fiberglass windows and then a stone base, uh, one foot kind of stone base running along the house here. Let's see, what are there, and so, I, in terms of, uh, the basement level, we, there's, uh, you know, there was a lot of time spent calculating the average grade plane relative to the first floor. Uh, as, you know, one side of, or almost two-thirds of the house is buried at the basement level, but it kind of peaks its nose out, uh, at the, the mudroom and the garage here. And we did that while keeping that volume, so it's less than twelve feet above grade, so it still counts as basement.
So what is this material? What is this material?
That, that right now is stucco, yeah, yeah. Uh, so what we're doing with the materials there is, we're, um, uh... The, uh, the, the Western red cedar is the main volume, and then the stucco is this lower bit and the northern volume, this is now stucco. And it's accented where it is stucco with some areas of Western red cedar. There's some panels and a screen that are Western red cedar there. And the garage doors would probably be Western red cedar also. So we're trying to blend together the, the main volume and this two, uh, subservient like kind of stucco.
Right now, the, the garage and all that sort of pre-succumbent, that this house sits on, which gives it a nice scale. How does that relate in elevation to the adjacent house, um, farther up on, as far as height, et cetera?
It's...
Because it looks, it looks like it's brought it down to a really nice scale, but I want to make sure that there isn't something going on with the...
There's a significant slope and ledge there, so what's happening is that is almost, you know, below grade from the adjacent house, that bit that projects out.
So in fact, if I'm standing on the second floor and looking out, I'll still be looking at Brock or I'll start to look at...
You'll start looking over it on the second floor.
Of our house or of the adjacent?
Yeah, of your house.
Yeah, it's right here, so there's that, there's that ledge. So you have, so there's the, so what happens is, here's your garage section.
Yep.
Here's the house that's like fifty feet behind it.
Yep.
That's ghosted in, and so here's your first floor, so there, you're not really seeing anything over the ledge. And so it's not until you're in the second floor that you start looking over, because the existing house was one eighty-three, where the new house is one story above, it's fifteen feet tall.
Okay, and from the adjacent house, you're really not going to see, because that house is already taller.
Yeah.
You're not gonna be looking up, you're gonna be looking ahead.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And what we have done is, uh...
Away from the other houses.
Right, did you bring down the scale of the mass?
This is actually what? Here's the ledge we're talking about. That's, that's that piece in between, so we're literally looking from the first floor entrance, where the actual house is, and you can't see it because of that giant piece of ledge.
Is there a lot of glass monitors or, or penetration looking towards that house? Or is that...
There are some bedroom windows.
Those are probably locked anyways.
The, there's some bedroom windows and there's a bay where the main stair goes up.
I just saw some light monitors and I wasn't sure, because those are the ones that apparently get any screening.
So, yeah, that, right, those right here are in the middle of the volume of the house.
Yep.
Uh, and so, you can, um, just a second, let's go to the...
It seemed like...
Oh, was that the, oh, maybe it's in a different order, oh, I put the...
Yeah, you hit the forward button.
There we go, okay, it's, so, uh, the, the main corridor on the second floor, the idea was to pop this up to get some natural light in there, so it's not dark. Uh, as, and keep it high enough so we don't have issues with snow against the windows there. But what you can see in the perspectives here of the entrance, that, uh, and really from every side of the house, it's, it's set back from the perimeter, so if you're seeing things from grade, uh, that monitor is not super visible. From a distance, it makes sense.
Right, I'm just wondering, is it gonna make a giant bar of bright light towards that height?
I, I would say if that's an issue, we can direct the, the lighting in such a way in the hall, so it's down and nothing shooting out.
Something like, something like that would be really, would be nice, because it goes back to dark skies. I know we've talked about interior lights, exterior lights, but especially when you get skylights.
Yeah, that's, it, exactly, it, I think, yeah, we'll look really carefully at the lighting in that spot and make sure that there, there's no glare in that area.
Great.
Um, I don't know, did you have any questions?
Well, I think it's, personally, I think it's a terrific, um, and, uh, happy departure from the usual historically evocative size of this...
Bravo, well done.
It'll be historical at some point.
Can we applaud? Or just move in?
Make an offer, please.
Very nice.
Beautiful.
So, anyway, um, let's talk about, um, consultants comments. You know, Dave's not here, what, what does he have to say? I imagine site drainage is a challenge on this site.
So, Dave commented on this too, is fine with this. But yes, I did get comments from Dave on this as well. And looking at this, he's basically, he's okay with the stormwater for one forty-six co2. They're using green roof support payments and a rain garden to mitigate the stormwater, which is great. Just need to think about different conditions with these, so that for maintenance with standard intrusion system. Usually just need to go there once to make sure it went in, these are, those systems are big and have uniform questions. With the features they're proposing, the actual method of construction is much more important. So, we need to have, basically, in conditions, when he comes out and monitors and checks those. You know, normally we have, prior to backfill, he wants to look at these, you know, the green roof, when they put it in, there's gonna be a few more construction points he has to factor into this.
Did he talk at all about that ledge versus water going from that ledge to the house?
No, he didn't talk about that. You're talking about like runoff coming down to it, to, to the house? And how that stopped?
No, I would think Jay would talk about, would have responded to that more. He didn't bring it up as an issue, though.
I'm just wondering about the big ledge, you got all the water coming down, and then you've got the house standing there with open arms going...
And that, if you are in the grain from site plan, they, uh, we have a swell between us and the ledge, that, that's a little bit of the cut we're doing through there. And then we pull that down towards the, that all discharges down toward the driveway, which is porous asphalt. And that's why that rain garden's there, it picks up that water, it infiltrates it, and then it's, lets it go into the, to the stream.
Okay.
Okay.
Kim, changes of landscape?
They responded to everything we discussed in the survey, so...
Comments from the board?
I'm good.
You want?
Yeah.
Are we done doing our job now?
Yeah, something.
Big thumbs, yeah. So now here's, here's the...
Oh, what's this?
Here's the, here's the element to really discuss. This is memo from, um...
Oh, Town of Weston.
From DPW today, and they're looking at the stream that goes through it. And they would like continued maintenance of that.
Is it being done now by somebody else, sort of?
So, well, I think it hasn't been maintained, um, for a while, but with the previous owner, and I think, I don't know what happened in, in the interim, but there has been work done in that, there has one been work done within that stream channel by the previous owners, that they would like to see, you know, the stream channel restored. But then secondly, they would like to see, um, DPW would like to see the owners responsible for maintenance of the stream free flowing, as there has been issues in that entire area with that, with that stream backing up and flooding other areas. It's not only solely limited to this property too, it's been seen on other properties.
So are they going back to other properties and trying to find a redevelopment and asking those owners to maintain the streams?
I think, yes, they are. Um, this is the only one we've seen come before us.
Have they power to do that?
That's a question. So that's, that's, that's what they're asking here. That's what they're asking here, and I think that's, that's, um...
But do we have the power to do this?
Being that this came in today.
Yeah.
I think what needs to be discussed with the applicants further.
So we had, uh, we're meeting, we originally, I was at a meeting with DPW and Michelle on, on the thirteenth, to actually discuss the stream. Um, originally, when we did the submission, the DPW wanted us to actually give them an easement on the stream and the culvert that's on our side of the road, so they could maintain it. Um, that culvert, if you remember, is the culvert that's the zero Hamilton issue. That's the culvert, so that hasn't been maintained, it hasn't been maintained since that subdivision.
Didn't we make a deal?
We did.
Put that one to, to do that culvert, and then what happened?
And so the, the town, as you can read the letter, states that they didn't, uh, DPW hasn't done anything to the culvert, because they felt that the, the doming rate in stream is so restrictive, that even if they fixed the entire culvert and cleaned it all out, it doesn't matter. Well, my argument is, it does matter. There's only a trickle in that stream, so every little bit helps, and I'm sure everybody upgrading that culvert would say, yes, please take care of the culvert. And so, that's part of the discussion we want to have with them on Wed, on next Wednesday, and who's in charge of it, who has to be maintained, because wherever they are then, that stream is part of the street drainage. They have catch bases that discharge through it, they have, they have the culvert that goes through there. When that road got built and got accepted, that was all part of the, that's all part of the, the road drainage. And so that should be maintained by DPW through there, and we're willing to give them an easement to do it, but to put the onus on the applicant to do it. And then, as we know, when people flood upgrading, what if they continue to flood, because we, he maintains it once a year. It's always been three times a year. Now, if he's gonna get sued because someone's getting flooded, that's not, to me, that doesn't make any sense.
So the town needs to maintain all the waterways, and say all waterways have to be maintained?
Al and I are sort of surprised, because we thought this was all settled years ago, but evidently DPW decided, no, it was hopeless, so we're not gonna do anything. But they didn't bother to tell anybody? I mean, am I right?
Oh, you're right.
That what you just said to me?
Might, is that what your understanding is too?
That understanding goes well, well before what, what I know about this. I, what's that?
No, go ahead, please.
Yeah, no, it's just in, in talking with DPW, I mean, Jay, Jay is correct, the original idea was for an easement. Um, but, you know, upon further review, they made a different call, that they, they did not want to be responsible for maintaining this portion of the property. And would like it to be fixed up. You know, and they have pointed out to the other areas that have flooded. But as for the cause and the maintenance of where that stopped, I don't know that history, I don't know when that...
Jim, what's your objections to their request?
To put the onus on the homeowner, like that.
The cost issue?
The cost issue, and also there's a, there's a, there's a potential for litigation issue.
It's liability.
Because if you don't maintain it for your responsibility, then you're liable for something downstream.
Yeah, and that, and that culvert was always part of the original street drainage, and that means that stream was part of the original street drainage. So, that means that section...
So you're assuming a liability.
But also, it's a cost of maintaining it, and you want the same, the same authority taking care of all the waterways and dealing with all the culverts and it's uniform working.
Yeah, but you're gonna know, I mean, this is nothing like our, it's just like, what is going on here? But why did they send this?
I don't know, you're, you're handing this out, and just, is this for national purposes? Is that the reason?
No, no, this is because DPW is requesting a condition, so we got this today, DPW...
A plenty more condition?
Yeah.
But I don't see how we can impose a condition that has off-site consequences. That's the thing that, that poses me...
Is this from Steve Fogg? It's not signed, just on a stationery.
Yeah, it's not signed, just written. A long paragraph.
It's a long and wordy one. But, that's, that's an open question. Or how can we be responsible for placing conditions on, on issues that are, that aren't on the site we're looking at?
It's not your property.
It's not their, it's not their property. I mean, it's like specifying road widths or...
It's not my house.
Something that happens on a buyer's property, or, I mean, we're, this is site plan review. Not a special permit, and even with a special permit, we couldn't place conditions off-site, so...
I don't think they're asking for off-site, I think they're asking for maintenance on-site of the stream channel.
Well, it sounds to me as though they're, they're asking, that, that then implies off-site consequences.
They are asking for, because of off-site consequences.
It's not satisfactory to off-site, um, property owners, that they then get saddled with liability. And I don't see how we could impose a condition that would have off-site consequences, that would, that would make them liable. I think it's a, I'd like to get Town Council's opinion about whether we can even do this, okay?
Also, it's setting up, they're telling them to maintain it, well, what level of maintenance mean? Do they do it to, you know, a certain percentage, or they want it to this percentage, or they want you to dig out four feet and then get it out three feet? I mean, you have no idea what, what it means, how often? Is it somebody else's fault if that comes down to you?
We just say, our condition says do a good job, you know?
Basically, in the letter, they say that they would, they would meet him on site. They would, they say in the letter, they would meet on site with the, with the homeowner and show them what they would have to do.
and show them what they would have to do with, of course, we have to get a.
Videotape, put on YouTube.
We have to get the pool from Concom and do any of this.
Right, right.
But they, one of the photos they show is that it's, it's, it's existing rocks. Like, so they're not, like, they're not just falling in. They're rocks that are in the slopes that are adjacent to each other. Like, so a few, that's one of the restrictions they're talking about. To pull that out, that means we're gonna, we're gonna.
Change everything you just said.
Destroy the entire bank. We're gonna change that fact stream.
Because they believe it's appropriate to turn to thirty-six inches in width.
There's no president.
My experience.
Considering.
It would be interesting, you know, I think it would be, what was the, what was the address? Zero, zero?
Zero Hamilton.
Hamilton.
Yeah.
To go back to that site plan review discussion and the conditions, you know, and then why would the town choose to ignore conditions that were worked out in that, in that process? And then bring it back to, you know, to, to this one? You know, why? That, for me, that's, if, we already tried to address this problem once. As I understand it, DPW said, well, we don't like that solution, even though they agreed to it when we were, when we went through the negotiations. Do you remember all this?
I do.
This is.
This was, but, this was like a two thirteen.
This was Zero Hamilton? This is the one that was? I'm sure you were on the board then, but anyway. It was, it's the same culvert that was going, that, and we, we talked about how to address the, the fact that the culvert blocked periodically and who was gonna clean out the culvert. Do you remember all that?
Yeah.
Yep, we walked along the road.
We walked along the road, we looked at the culvert. And, and somehow, that condition got ignored by the town. And now they're requesting another condition on this review for the same issue. And I, I just think, I'd, I'd like to get some, I'd, once you get an opinion from town council, as to what our authority is here. Okay?
It also says that twenty-four inch diameter culvert is completely submerged.
Who's fault is that?
I think when it gets blocked, it gets blindly submerged, yeah.
It's blocked out.
The other thing is that they're required to have a certain buffer by state regulations. And to me, when that happens, they say, this part, this is a part of a state, municipal, town, waterway entity, natural asset. And we're telling you to keep away from it because it's, it's town only, town wide. Therefore, why should one person be responsible for it?
So you have a meeting with DPW?
And Michelle on, on the thirteenth.
Let's get an opinion from Katie.
They might want to present. They're not allowed to present at that meeting.
DPW and, and Concom and Michelle, so that was.
I thought you were gonna be present at that meeting.
I said, you wanna be?
Oh, I, I am gonna be.
Oh, you're gonna be there, of course.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a quick meeting. Next thing will ask you to maintain the Charles River.
It's not that, just the Cambridge water supply.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. Let's find out from Katie what we, you know, what our area of authority is here. I have a question as to whether we have any role in this whatsoever.
Okay, with that said, do you want to go to decision next, for the next meeting or?
Yeah, I mean, you feel, okay. Let's, let's do the draft decision.
Okay.
And get input from Katie as to, you know. Okay, so we'll look at the decision on the twentieth.
On the twentieth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Great job.
Especially in presence of landscaping.
I can't take any credit. Andrew from our office did it all.
You were in Apple.
It's all in the delivery, Jay.
I remember this house, but I don't remember that.
The negotiations over the culvert? We've had several sessions over the culvert.
We got a sign to sign, you want?
So, yeah, I have an A and R here.
My L R is ancient and venerable.
Hey, put that ancient event on.
That's a L R member.
I wanna bring back linen.
Oh, linen. So this is. Eighty-three Conter here. This was a site plan approval. I wanna say twenty thirteen, but I may not be exactly accurate on that. They wanna, they have a fence line right here. So kind of by default, this strip of property has been maintained by this owner here. So they just want to formalize that and transfer this over to them. The A and R is relatively straightforward, but it does require also approving it as a site plan approval.
And C D R meeting it?
Approval not required, no.
It's the most confusing game there is.
No, I just had to thank you.
So, so that part of property transfer is pretty straightforward. You do, we do have to at the same time say that this site plan approval amendment is acceptable to the board because this strip is going out of here. It functionally doesn't change anything. I took a drive-by here today. You, you can't see this.
I know, I drive by there all the time.
Yeah, this is funny.
Okay. So, along with this, I'll prepare a memo saying the site plan approval amendments could be approved, but you can sign it by now.
Do you have to use your pen, do you pen?
Yep. Getting my fancy pen. Because the ancient and venerable form of my L R requires the special pen.
Do we sign all of them?
Yes, please.
No, we don't, because like Al.
You like to. And the illegible.
Get on that side.
Bandit, another nice signature now. Stabs a paw print on there?
That's what I should do, to just sign like a paw print.
Yeah. Is it easy?
I can imagine, that's harder, man.
Depending on who's looking at it. Dog?
Yes. So, yeah, this is, these are the recording plans for ninety-eight. Uh, no, that, that was a proposal to do a conservation even. Yeah. But then conservation said that, said that this is gonna carry into, to maybe define just this line.
This can't remain before I.
You're pitching a solid area for signatures.
We need many pennies. This is very inefficient.
I can buy five more.
I have another one, you want another one? Here.
This one's complete.
This is Steve's, right? This is Steve's. Sure does, probably.
Okay.
Well, hold on there, because we're signing.
Who didn't sign this one? Are you on this?
Yes, I'm on that one. Come on, say anything, but I think we have the most legible hand right here.
No, I think Al's.
No, I think mine's better.
You can have it.
Okay, and then ninety-eight lovely. Since the, uh, pill period has expired on that? Those here, those here, okay. Okay, great, you're all good then. Thank you for coming by, just to answer our questions.
Thank you.
That's what I need.
Thank you all very much.
See, it sounds like that's anything else.
This is my L R. This one is my L R. For some reason. Well, maybe this is.
No, there's bond copies and there, there should be a my L R, a couple, two bonds.
Well, this is a pile of crap, so it's not a car.
Oh, yeah, you can use that.
Anything tasty in the, uh.
Yeah.
How many are?
Oh, he gave us, he did both the lotting and the one with the top.
So they just keep producing this. All that law and the time.
Here we go. Somebody needs to handle these things down the table.
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't start in the center.
But maybe here.
This is the most teamwork we've ever demonstrated.
Two, she's here? Oh my God, we're just.
Here we go.
Okay. One.
Oh, so do we need them?
I got it. There it is. Need a special pen.
We have the special pen.
We have special pens. Thank you for us.
These are done, these two are done. Is that your major ten?
No, this is not, I think this is.
One is Steve's, two are mine.
Susan has mine, I have yours.
Okay.
Susan's mine.
Yes.
Why are there two my L R and the rest?
Oh, one is the, one is just lotting, one is.
Oh, I'm still going to say.
Right, is there a time before you?
What's that?
Getting ready. Did you have a my, is there a town report?
Yes, there is a town plan report for tonight. There are also our minutes.
Minutes.
Steve and Sue both reviewed their minutes. Thank you both.
Okay?
Yes.
So they gave me, they gave me, um. Steve gave me his corrections, Sue gave me her corrections. There were not many, there were just a couple of things.
Okay, so, minutes, let's, let's do that right down.
I think it was seven hundred, they went deep for that.
No, minutes are right here.
Oh, minutes are right here.
Yeah.
October third, two thousand eighteen. Somebody want to make the motion to approve the minutes?
I'm willing to be a good minutes from ten three eighteen and eleven seven eighteen.
Poppa. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good, okay. Now, town plan a report.
Town plan a report, okay. Just bring this up here. Should have printed this, but I didn't think we would have this problem today.
To go to the commission meeting.
Yeah.
So nothing for next week?
For next week.
Um, eighteenth, as you guys know, is a special town meeting for town center.
Do we have a bid by the way?
Come and vote.
Yeah.
We have five bids.
What can I do with the numbers?
I don't know the numbers until tomorrow.
Does anybody know the numbers?
Oh, yeah, you, no, um, I, I think like DPW does, but they're gonna discuss it tomorrow.
Okay, so you can, okay.
I don't, I don't have the numbers.
There's gonna be a public meeting where they're gonna discuss it.
That, that's, that's what I understand, right?
Yes.
A public meeting? I don't know.
Yes.
I mean, there's not a whole lot of time between now and March eighteen.
But it, is it, is it a quorum? Your meeting is a quorum?
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's gotta be public.
Yeah, well, yes, that's definitely public. Oh, I thought you meant like big gathering.
Oh, no, 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 just.
Yeah, that's.
So we will talk that far when we do.
Then a bid, all the bids.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Um, on the nineteenth, we have a site visit at one hundred Meadowbrook. And then twentieth is our regular meeting. As for master plans and long-range plans, we've kind of covered all of those last week, so not much new to discuss there. Same with state level plans. Let's see, seven fifty-one Boston Post Road has submitted their PEL to, to mass housing. We've been asked to, we have, um, the selectmen have asked us to comment and we will hear from them on the twentieth as well.
Can we get that out as soon as possible so as not to put any impediments in their plan?
Well, that's what we're gonna have to discuss that night. I would, yeah, I would say we, let's talk about that when we have it on, on an agenda item, so. That's, um, both of those, seven fifty-one and five eighteen South Avenue are going to be on the selectmen's agenda, as I understand it, for the twenty-sixth.
Oh, it's on the same evening?
Yeah.
That should be lively.
Yeah.
Both of which?
Uh, seven fifty-one Boston Post Road and five eighteen. So seven fifty.
Seven fifty-one hasn't presented to the selectman before?
They have.
Oh, yeah.
This is their, this is their coming now with their PEL up after they've submitted the PEL.
Oh, I see.
And they're, the selectmen are gonna discuss comments at that time for, for the PEL. That's.
So that's, so this is the project eligibility meeting with the selectmen for seven fifty-one, but the introductory meeting for.
For five eighteen, correct, yeah, so. This is the first one for five eighteen. Let me just bring up seventy-five Scotch Pine here. If you folks remember this, this was the one with the large autocore. They are now, um, asking to shrink the building footprint. So this red here, original lines.
No.
Yeah. So, it's gotten, and they have, they have asked to make it smaller. The most noticeable feature of this.
No, it's a square footage.
It's regular.
Wait, can you go back to that? So, the one on the right is the new one and the one on the left is the prior one?
Yes, correct.
The one on the left, we approved. The one on the right is the new.
Yep.
Those are at the same scale.
Yep.
Yeah, you talk, cause the garage is the same size.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they did, they made the.
You're not gonna go for many cars.
So what is your concern with square footage?
Oh.
Everything else is reduced to the garage.
No, on that, I.
It's true.
It's like the whole thing's shrunk.
Everything.
Yeah.
The wing just shrinks.
Becoming microsiphalic.
Doesn't sound good.
So how many feet are we at now?
Uh, you know, I've, I have to go look at the email to remember the number.
I mean, smaller is always good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Smaller, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Broches the same size.
Yeah, no, no shrinking on the garage.
What is, so the.
So what did happen here too was that this wall that was against the metal gets pulled back and it gets shorter.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
But it's funny, the house in elevation doesn't look so much smaller.
It's still tall.
They took, they took out a turret.
It's still tall.
Yeah.
The turret is missing, yeah.
It's squeezed a little, everything got reduced like, like fifteen percent.
But it's really.
And they made it darker color too.
Both of the turrets are gone.
The planning impact is much greater though. There's not that much difference when you.
No, it's that central core.
Yeah, it's.
Storage.
And smaller is good.
Yes.
So. So. Um, this is, they do wanna change the, the finish on the backside, they originally had that white stained brick. Um, on the backside, they wanted to do this, this stucco.
What, is that stucco, or is that?
It's a stucco.
Limestone, right?
It's a stucco.
It says stone limestone.
That's, that's the, um. Uh, that is, I believe, the, the type of finish it is, yeah.
So they're just basically putting a crenelations or joints to make it look like limestone?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
New channels.
Stone limestone.
Yeah, it's stone.
Okay, that looks different.
Yeah, see, it's, it's reduced by about fifteen percent, everything is squished. Everything is squished.
Yeah, so it's been squished over the.
So what's the square footage now versus before?
That's, I have to go look at, I have to go look at the email that they.
Must it, must it always send, anyone, must it always send stripey? Or is it just?
No, that's, that's a ran, that's a, I think that's a rendering effect, yeah, one day.
The pochette is the key to material, okay.
Yeah.
They just took a JPEG and just reduced it.
Look at all those dormers now that weren't there before, those little ones. The four, and the third.
Yeah, so this is where they're changing to stucco, you can see like they had this, this pochette is the brick, this pochette is the stucco.
Is it, is it shorter in height?
No.
Cause I agree with what Steve's saying, there seem to be now a whole bunch of little windows.
There's this, yes.
What are, what are those, are those really turrets, or are they?
Little dormers.
No, they're dormers.
Each sticking out more?
Yeah.
I think it's gonna take a little bit of looking at quite honestly.
Now you see it, now you don't.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, there's, I mean, it's, smaller is good and it shouldn't be, but I'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
Is to make sure, cause there's so much going on.
Okay.
All right. Okay, give it that.
Fair enough, we can, we can, um, we can schedule some time.
Consider that.
Yeah, send it out, yeah, unless, yeah, that would be helpful.
All right, sounds good. Well, do, what did I just?
Go in the right direction.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just see another. Turn that, turn that cottage in the woods.
There's a magic garden.
Um, if, I, Paul is here, and he wanted to talk to, uh, something about a rail trail update, so. You had a.
It's not a large.
I actually got my.
Well, it's, as a committee updates.
Okay.
So I have that as that part, and, but it's not an action item, it's an information item.
I heard this is sustainability, so I can, I'll be right back.
She's seen the movie.
Thank you, continue.
She's read the book.
If you could be brief, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, we're rapidly losing control, Paul, as you can see.
I can see, but I got my education from that. As some of you may know, Eversource has a, a practice, a required practice, which is sensible, trimming our trees every three years or so. And twenty nineteen is the year we do it, and I don't know how many of you have heard, but they have notified, uh, Michelle that, uh, they wanna do it, and it's somewhere near the wetlands, so that she has some kind of say over it. However, she has very limited say, and, uh, what, what is gonna happen, this, this raises in my mind two classes of, of problems. Number one is that they're gonna be using, uh. They're gonna be using chemicals to, uh, control the vegetation in some areas, and other people are looking at that, and I'm not gonna talk about that here. Thing that worries me is the possibility of damage occurring during the, during the tree handling. Now, as you know, we went to great pains to, uh, to prevent damage to the historical items during the construction, and that was very successful, and that was worked in. As far as I know, the tree people are not subject to the same, uh, rules that the construction people were, avoiding the, the, uh, historical assets, and therefore, I'm, I'm taking it upon myself, and I'm gonna try to get the rail trail committee to go along with me, and I think they will at our next Monday meeting. I'm speaking a little bit out of turn, as though that this is something that they are doing, but I'm bringing it up to use, uh, because you're meeting here, and you can give us some advice about how, how to handle this situation. The, uh, problem is that they've been using procedures over the last decades, uh, where they can be rough and ready in there, and it doesn't really make any difference, because if they do some damage, nothing, there's no problem. There are instances where they have, uh, just for joyriding purposes, sort of, uh, seem to have, um, damaged some of the historical artifacts, which are therefore no longer available to the town, and this happened years ago, years before any of us were, were around perhaps. Uh, I think I'm perhaps the only person in the town committee and government structure who's actually sat down and talked to these guys. When I went out in summer twenty sixteen, uh, to learn more about the rail trail, they were doing their, their thing, and I sat down, and I had lunch with them, and I learned what kind of people they are, and they're very good at their job, at what they do, however, they don't care anything about what gets damaged, collateral damage along the way. Now we've got something that has improved, and, and I'm looking at the possibility of damage to, to the environment in some sense, to, due perhaps to the herbicides, but more important to me, damage to the trail, to the shoulders, to the fencing, and in particular to the historical assets. I appeared for the historical commission earlier tonight, and asked their support for trying to, uh, talk Eversource into, uh, applying the same rules uh, to the tree people that they applied to the construction people, and I, I feel comfortable that we can, we can do that, but it's gonna have to take some townwide cooperation in order to do it. The historical, the, uh, historical society is interested in those, but they're not so interested in damage to the fencing or to the pavement or anything like that, which I think the town also has, has an interest in. So I'm proposing three things that I hope happen, and I'm, I'm just telling you about it in a little, in advance of bringing it up to my own committee, just because you're here and I have a captive audience. I, I think that three things that they've done in the past need changing, that I'm gonna recommend. One is that they should respect the items that were retained during construction, I've just been talking about that, and that, um. Two, uh, they should not use currently the two staging areas where they kept their vehicles for parking. You may not know, but they parked their vehicles while they were doing this at the church street, uh, intersection, and at a place, uh, about a quarter of a mile west of Gun Club Lane. And both of those are gonna be problematic during the coming, uh, season, because the church street is gonna have construction going on right there for the trailhead, and church street will serve as a staging area for the construction on Conant Road for the underpass. So to have a third construction project right there is gonna be confusing, and it, uh, it's going to be with people who have never had to deal with that before. So, um, the reason they have to have parking is that they do a lot of different towns, and what they do is they use Weston for parking their vehicles, their large vehicles, they go off and take it away for a little while, do another town, and then drop it in Weston while they're busy doing something else. And I noticed that this is their most operandy, uh, three years ago, and there's no reason to suppose it's any different now. I think we as a town should, uh, make sure they don't try to use those same two areas. If they use the area west of Gun Club Lane, they run the damage, they run the danger of doing damage to the road through excessive vehicle traffic. The shoulders especially, and if they have to pass other vehicles, then there's no passing lane possible on the trail, they have to get off, and that definitely will damage the, uh, the shoulders. And in a lot of cases, they can't even do that because of the fences. So that's the second thing that I, I wanna lobby for, and the third thing I want to lobby for, uh, is that they should co- coordinate their work with the other three projects that are going on, the two trailheads and the, uh, underpass, all of which are gonna be on, going on simultaneously, as far as I can tell. And the way of doing that is to use, in my judgment, a very successful tailgate meeting, which Tom Cullen has had, and he wants to have for those three. I, I, I wanna lobby those people and try to get the, uh, the, the tree trimmers to actually go and attend the same meetings, so coordinate their schedules, and so that we can keep an eye on what they intend to do where, and in particular, make sure that they don't do any of the damage that I foresee as being possible, knowing the, the people as, as I do. So what I'm not asking anything particular from you, I think, but just briefing you on what I intend to do, and I would ask, if you think I'm nuts, tell me right now, please, and if you think this is not worth doing, tell me that. If you think it's worth doing, then I may come back and ask for a letter or for verbal support or something in the future. It's too early to, to know, and.
It's a question. What about the DCR?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they should be lobbying against.
Absolutely.
Potential damage, it's their property.
Yes. Actually, it's the MBTA property.
Oh, MBTA property?
The, the DCR did that, yes. I'll be talking to the DCR about this, and, uh, and I'm gonna be talking to my contact at Eversource.
Who's your contact at Eversource?
Uh, Denise Bartone.
Who was the contact that I rode around with for three days?
Chris Gonzalez.
Chris, Chris is a good guy, you wanna contact him too, he would be sensitive to all this.
Well, except that it's, this is a, it, it, this sounds like a different program, but maybe it is.
It's tree trimming, I mean.
The tree is, is it the same program as the, is the group that trimmed the, the street trees a couple of years ago?
No. I, I don't think so, because the.
They have a different group for trimming different.
Well, you better have somebody weigh up the food chain.
Yeah.
That was the worst thing.
Yeah, the transmission network and the transmission network are, are different.
What?
There's two kinds of, uh, of high voltage. There's a distribution, which is the, the retail, if you like, and then there's the transmission, which is also.
Okay, I got it.
And it takes different talents to handle.
Understood, sorry.
Yeah, but the question is, who's the interface with the town? Where, where's the towns, where does the town get traction to lobby?
I spoke with Michelle for a half hour on, about this very point, before she went on vacation, and, and, uh, about the herbicides, it turns out that she has no ability to do anything so long as they follow the instructions that manufacturers give. The, the town has very little, it'll be better.
I went into this a little bit through the sustainability end.
Okay.
And they basically, there is a, um, herbicide and tree trimming and all of that vegetation management program, which the Mass Electrify, whoever it is, puts out, and it's very interesting, because I believe the one for, uh, our area of western, eastern Massachusetts is like sixty pages, and the one from Antucket is like hundred thirty-four pages. And I, so I'm not really sure where the whys and where fors are, they allude to a lot of things being used in relationship to the way it says in the back of the blog, where there are no MDS sheets, uh, material data, um, sheets, so I, I think she's right, and then we have a limited window.
Yeah.
But I think we should still put our heads into that window and take it.
Okay, I'm, I'm not disputing that at all, um, I'm bringing up the other one of unintentional damage due to carelessness, or.
That is very.
Just too much going on.
Absolutely.
And I.
But, but my only question is, what, where, where is our end in this, I mean, where do we, where do we?
We're in the trash.
Leverage, leverage, leverage.
Where, where.
As far as I know, we don't have any.
We have none.
Yeah.
We have none, but the only thing we have is the power of persuasion, and I'm willing to use that, uh, on both Denise, who I have a good relationship with, and with DCR, and I think DCR can, can put the screws on them also. That's, that's all, that's all I can say, they, all we have is the power of persuasion, but we ought to use it.
Well, Adrian has a comment.
Yeah, a quick comment, you have really good, uh, feelers out, you have a reason to be afraid. They sent, Eversource sent on Crescent Street and the Boston Post Road, they hire road vendors from Rhode Island, and they come up here, they've got a contract, they cut any tree they wanted, live tree, dead tree, they cost me four hundred dollars worth of branches dumped in my yard. What needed, I wouldn't eat much with them, I'm one of those potato shooters, because these guys just gave me a, uh, you weren't here, you were someone over here, uh, gesticulation right over the fence, and I took pictures, I sent all my pictures to Nina, to, of the tree group. I couldn't get the cops to stop them or anything, it was a mess. There's a wire down on Crescent Street that is still down this very day, and it's now dragging over our driveway, where garbage man couldn't even get in today from two years ago. And these vendors come here, they have so many trees to cut, they don't care what they cut, so you have a really good sense of what's coming.
Uh, the transmission cutting is done quite differently.
Yeah, so it's not quite really different.
About what is to go and what is to stay, and the reason for that is to keep, keep away trees from, from, during the windstorm.
Yeah, but what, if they don't have a tree that's cut, that's logical, that's on a wire, they will just walk up and down and cut other trees.
No, this, this is not the way that, that it works on the transmission.
Okay, well, I'm praying that you're right, because you do not wanna have lunch with those guys, you know what I mean? Okay, I'm done, that's my input or present.
Well, I, the only thing I'm asking is for your blessing going ahead on something like this, and to the extent that we can make a difference.
And what partnership are you for doing, if you're actually thinking about it, or doing it?
And for caring.
Thank you, and.
That's all we can do.
I, I think, as a practical matter, the only way that we can actually get some of these procedures in place, and, and it's a, it's a new ballgame, as far as they're concerned, because there's improvements on there now, which can get our subject to damage, and I think, we as a town have, have an interest in keeping that from happening, even though we don't own the, the very own question.
Have other towns done similar things, if you can borrow from?
Hmm?
Have other towns realized they have now food structures, and have similar problems, so you can borrow from their protocols?
We're one of the first, uh, the first ones on the Mass Central line to be, to be, uh, to have this done on our behalf, and so.
I think we're probably.
We're leading the way.
I think we're probably unusual in that we have a high tension line right down the rail trail.
Right.
Well, Wayland has it also.
Yeah, Wayland.
Yeah, but Wayland is the same thing.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think any other rail trails have that, that con, that distinctive combination.
Actually, Milford does, and I found out about that because.
There's a rail trail because of the line.
Right, you're exactly right, so.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead, and if I need, I'm gonna try to get the cooperation of other bodies in town, including the planning board if necessary.
All right.
You heard about it from me first.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for.
Okay, thanks for caring.
I love that we adjourned our room.
Uh, what time? Nine fifty-six.
Yes. Nine fifty-six. I won't say be alert, it's not meant for the woodchaper.